The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. And if Secretary please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here, Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Bob Ostendorf is excused, John Itzel, Bob Dorshavitz.
Here.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
And do we have a motion for the approval of this evening's agenda? I have no additions or deletions.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes as submitted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the approval of our minutes of October 14th.
Ms. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes of October 14th as submitted, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone here that wishes to make any comments not related to anything on the agenda? Yeah. Well, okay. Make sure it's working. Is it? Okay, yeah. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business. Application 2372-1020, the Ridge Five Corporate Park Monument Sign. And Ms. How, your report.
Yes, thank you Chairman Sabolski. The application for you this evening is for a monument sign for the Ridge Five Corporate Park at Five Mile Road and Ridge Road. Overall, the sign complies with the location, the number of signs permitted, the setback, the signable area is actually smaller than what is permitted by code. The height is shorter than what is permitted by code. And the text is at least 30 inches above ground. The sign is also landscaped. And it also meets the requirement that there only be a maximum of two fonts. Only one font is proposed for the sign. The consideration this evening is for the design of the sign. So per the updated zoning ordinance, the planning commission can consider other materials for the base of the sign other than masonry, provided that the sign complies with the following standards. It is in keeping with the architecture and character of the principal building and/or established company logo, does not constitute traffic hazard, and is constructed of durable and weather resistant materials. So this site is only currently has its infrastructure, so there are no existing buildings as part of the corporate park. So the first standard that it is in keeping with the architecture and character of the principal buildings does not apply at this point, but the sign is in keeping with the established company logo. I provided a link to the development's website, which shows the use of these colors and font. And then the other two standards, does not constitute a traffic hazard. As it meets the setbacks and it's smaller in size, both in terms of signable area and height, we do not find that it's a traffic hazard. And it is proposed to be constructed out of aluminum, aluminum base and aluminum panels. Also on page three of the memo, one of the design standards is that no more than three colors may be used per sign and one uniform background color. And the sign does contain the black and red facing with the gray base. As the base is just over 30 inches and will be landscaped around it, we feel that the gray will not be acting as a third color in this respect. But there is consideration for both the black and the red colors, although they are in keeping with the established logo. So if the commission finds that this is an appropriate sign design and meets those standards, then we would recommend approval. And the applicant is not with us this evening. He called earlier today and had a conflict, but I'm happy to call him if there's any pending questions. Thank you.
Do you know how, will the sign be illuminated interior or exterior?
Internally illuminated, correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Laura, do you know what, as far as it being a lit sign internally, will it just show the five ridge as what's like what will come through, or will all the black area show up as well?
I believe it's just the white font that you see and then the corporate park. This would be the area that would show through with this as like the cutout.
Okay, so at night you wouldn't see the black and the red shining bright?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the sign as is with the extra color in there and the, let's see. That the gray colored face will not. Let's see, I'm not sure what the seems like a no brainer there.
Yeah.
We find the use of two colors.
The three colors, that's the only issue.
That's really the only issue.
No, the masonry thing is an issue.
Oh, the masonry. And being covered with bricks or the aluminum certainly is consistent with an industrial kind of situation, so. Motion to approve.
For support?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Pratt to approve the monument sign on application 2372-1020, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Application 2373-1020, the Beacon Hollow condo entrance sign feature. Ms. How, your report.
Thank you. And per Article 25 of the zoning code sign regulations, entry site features with signage identifying the name of the residential development are permitted. Typically, these are included and presented during planning commission's review of the residential development. So you recall similar projects, Verona Park, the Reserve, Tuscany. Signage was all requested at that time. And for Beacon Hill, or Beacon Hollow, excuse me, they have two entry signs currently that are constructed out of wood along Ann Arbor Trail. And they are requesting to replace these with two stone monument signs with engraved letters identifying the subdivision. In many ways, the sign does comply. It's comprised out of the masonry, the cultured stone with the engraved lettering with only one font. There are two signs proposed at either entrance to this residential development, which is permitted by ordinance. And the text is at least 30 inches above grade to allow for snow and landscaping.
Laura, can you bring up Google Earth and maybe show us?
Sure. The considerations this evening, first, the location does need to be verified, so it appears that the current location is satisfactory and meets the setback standards. But we do want to verify that with the actual sign permit that would be filed with the building department. So here is the first sign on the west side of the entrance, and this is the second sign on the east side. The other item, so we believe that can be handled with the building department. But the deviation this evening is that, per the ordinance, just to work with the building department, four feet in height is the maximum permitted for a residential sign unless approved by the planning commission. Their request is six point, six and a half feet in height. This, the height of this sign is similar or less to other signs that the commission has considered. As I mentioned, Verona Park, for instance, this would be shorter in height than that. And then we also note that for design standards, the base of any ground sign shall be landscaped to create a year round buffer for the sign. There does appear to be some landscaping in this entry area, but we recommend maybe some additional flowering plantings be added. And then we'd also like to have the color of the engraved lettering noted on the final plan for the building department.
Laura, I think on the other sign, this one says Beacon Hollow. The other one, is that an address or what drive it is?
I think it's Pine Crest Drive.
Okay. Will the signs that we're approving tonight, will they all say Beacon Hollow, or will they also have a street name on them?
I'm not sure that, I think the applicant is here this evening, if they want to.
Are you here for this applicant? No, okay.
My guess is that they would have one that would say Beacon Hollow and the other one that would say Pine Crest Drive. As I understand, they want to replace what is out there today in the same location, just with a more substantial entry feature with a more like timeless material.
Do you know if it would be lit?
Pardon me?
Do you know if these signs would be lit? Would they be illuminated?
I believe there already are small, like ground lights
Okay.
there today, and those would remain.
Did you say that the material is all masonry or?
All stone, yes, correct. And then it would just be engraved with the lettering.
I don't think I've seen it elsewhere where they have the name of a street as a sign like this. Can anyone else remember that?
Can you repeat it again?
Um, how this says Pine Crest Drive is a sign. I don't recall ever seeing that elsewhere in the township, do you?
I've never noticed that.
I would also note that the current two signs, the one with the street on it substantially smaller than the one that says Beacon Hollow. I'm not sure what their plan is for both sides. Doesn't really tell us, does it?
As I understand, they would like both, both signs to be the same size as they presented in this. So the same signable area, the same height.
Well, we can verify that in the, in the motion, and if there's a change, then you can come, you know, tell us next month.
Yeah, it's a little confusing because one is, one is announcing the name of the, of the neighborhood, and the other one is announcing the name of the street. Beacon Hollow is the name of the
Development, isn't it?
Right?
Yes.
Any other concerns or are we ready for a motion?
Is there a homeowners association?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. With respect to any landscaping additions, wouldn't it be best just to leave that up to the homeowners association?
Yes, as a subdivision, you know, we have required landscaping of these areas in the past. So if that's something that the commission was interested in making sure occurs here, then that would be one potential you know, condition, that the ordinance does state that the base of any ground sign shall be landscaped to create a year round buffer.
Do you know if they're planning on installing that this season, this building season, or?
I suppose that depends on if they could get someone to do the work, and you know, they have to do footings for it, so the ground.
I don't know, but it seems to me like we ought to, we need some more information here. I don't feel like I have enough information as to what the construction of the two signs are and what their configuration is and all of that. And I'd really like to see somebody here from the association to explain to us exactly what they're going to do. This very limited little picture that they've got, doesn't seem to be enough information to me.
Well, I, well, what do you think of this? I don't think we have an issue with the Beacon Hollow sign.
No, but I think
But the Pine Crest sign, if they're going to make, if they're going to use two Beacon Hollow signs, I don't think we have an issue with that. But if one is going to be Pine Crest and it's smaller, then I think we need, we could potentially approve two Beacon Hollow signs tonight. And if they want something different, then they'd have to come back. What do you think?
Perhaps administratively, without coming back?
I don't know. I, to me, I just postpone it and encourage them to come back in December.
Any other thoughts on that?
It's not going to delay them at all. I think it's hard to draw any conclusions when what the campaign wants to do. There's some things to that, but on that, folks don't care.
Well, our next meeting is, it's on the second Wednesday of the month still?
December 9th, yes.
So it, we'll have the meeting sooner than, you know, the typical. Yeah, I doubt if they will be able to get anything done. Well, should we postpone it until the next month's meeting for additional information? Or do it administratively, or whatever your comfort level is?
To me, I, I'm not comfortable passing anything until I get more information from them.
I agree.
Okay, is there a motion then to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone the PC 2373-1020 for up to 60 days, requesting additional information from the applicant.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Itzel to postpone application 2373-1020 for up to 60 days, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have no old business. Let me just, are you here just to observe us, or do you have anything to bring forward? Oh, okay. Welcome, okay. I just didn't want to ignore you. Oh, okay. Well, you know, you can have 200 channels on TV and there's nothing to watch except us. All right, the planning and zoning monthly report. Laura, do you want to walk us through that, or anybody have a question on it? No questions? Should we just receive and file?
Commissioners, I would like to update you quickly on the Hillside Residences, the former Courthouse Grill site. The purchase agreement between the property owner and Jonah Properties has expired. Their agreement expired even though the township approval was guaranteed until January of, you know, this coming year of 2021. So we, we will wait out that period until January and then close the file. But we expect to see other development plans for that site sometime in the near future. We understand it's being marketed.
Do you want to give the commission a little update on the Henry Ford Hospital development?
Sure, so it, Henry Ford and Grand Saquon are moving forward with that project. They have submitted revised plans for consideration, and we have provided them some comments in return. And they continue to work with engineering to secure permits from Wayne County and MDOT.
Questions on any other items that are on the report? Okay, is there a motion to receive and file?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we receive and file the planning and zoning monthly report for October 2020.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Pratt to receive and file the October planning zoning report, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the residential, no, I'm sorry, the mixed use district discussion.
Thank you. Um, the cover memo just briefly states that, you know, as we discussed at the October planning commission meeting, that we would continue having a discussion on mixed use overlay districts. And specifically, we had talked about it in the Lily Road corridor, but there are certainly probably other instances in the township where a less intensive mixed use zoning district may be appropriate. And this cover memo just kind of explains that early, early 1900s, the standard land use pattern was more of a mixed use. And then we kind of got away from that into very separate rigid land use categories, residential, commercial, industrial, public. And there's sort of a resurgence return to more of a mixed use district. So the, the text on the following page is, is meant to be a sample of what such a mixed use district might be. And in this case, this is a mixed use residential overlay, so it's really geared towards a neighborhood serving retailer office use. And you'll see that the proposed uses are all by special land use. So this would require a public hearing still. It would require planning commission review and discretionary considerations. It would permit one, but no more than one of these uses. And these uses are, as examples. There's a provision that the ground floor, if it were a two story structure, the ground floor could be used for non-residential use. But then the upper, upper floors could be used for non-residential use, but not related, not for the public. And then a couple use regulations to further ensure that the scale was appropriate, so residential form of the building maintained, entrances on the public street, no outdoor storage, and signs limited to only a wall or a projecting sign.
So where would be an example in the township where a mixed use development would make sense?
So I think along Lily Road, we had, you know, discussed this, this portion of kind of being in transition. Perhaps even some on Main Street. You know, there might be some residential structures that would convert to office, or maybe more of a live work unit, bed and breakfast. Hagerty Road, maybe not.
Places that are, those are main streets that you've got. What about the develop on, along Ann Arbor Road where the condos are, where the old Sunshine Honda used to be? We have residential there.
We do, we do, yes, where the Red Olive.
Right, right.
I would also think Sheldon Road, south of Ann Arbor Road, probably, because there's several businesses on that, on the east side of that road already.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess my question is, this sample language page that you provided us, this is a sample or suggested, suggestions for language that might be placed in the zoning ordinance, creating a M U R district?
Yes, so I wanted to, when we talk about mixed use districts, they can take many different forms. In some communities, there may be like a MU one, MU two, MU three, and the variety and intensity of uses increases as you get further, just like you might have a C one or a C two and a C three. So I tried to just provide some language of what would be really the lowest, the lowest intensity mixed use district, and adding that residential, the word residential into it to really kind of hit that home. And I'm happy to take this and put this into a more ordinance format, but I really wanted to just show the commission what this, what this, you know, provision would look like and kind of what, what the possibilities are.
I do, I do like the list of potential uses. I think that's very good. I think it, if, I think it makes sense in some, certain limited places, that, some of which we've just mentioned, that we actually insert or create this kind of thing in the zoning ordinance that allows us to do that in, in given, in certain circumstances. Another one I just thought of was Ann Arbor Trail, east of, east of Hagerty Road, because there's, there's all kinds of different things happening there. In that, in that area, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm thinking of.
And maybe up in Five Mile as well? I think there's like cake store up in there. So I think on the other, like heading further west. Right down in there.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, not this section in particular, but for, further down on School Craft. There's also this area across. Yeah. And we have had requests for office use in some of these homes.
So I'm, what I'm just saying is that I think we should develop, you know, we, we keep adding more and more potential spots that we ought to have something put into the zoning, added to the zoning ordinance so that we have some standards to work from.
Another place I could think of is that lone house on, I think it's on Five Mile, that is not part of the industrial park. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because that would be something that could be done eventually with that home then. Thinking too of the home that's across from the picnic basket. I think they came to the commission some, number of years ago, the home right on the corner, hoping to do some type of business in that home. And it was denied.
No, that was going to be a, like a
Construction office.
Center for seniors. But it looks to me like that home has been converted back to residential.
I think so too.
Children's playscape and that kind of thing there.
Because it didn't have a kitchen in it, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, but I think they did some extensive remodeling there.
I think so too.
One use that I do not have listed is a, yeah, medical or dental clinic.
Don't, don't you most often see these like in walkable cities? You know, you kind of create like an urban district or something like that.
Sure, I think it, probably like the one that most of us could visualize is just when you're going on Ann Arbor Trail into downtown Plymouth, there's like a number of like law offices that, you know, there's a bed and breakfast that has been converted.
What about that area on, talking about dental offices along Joy Road? You know, going from Canton Center Road eastward? There's a combination of those kind of offices and some homes and then also across the street on the Canton side.
Where they're building the three houses or?
Right, 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 right. And now they're going to, on the Canton side, it appears they're going to redevelop that UAW Bishop Hall. So that sort of fits in on both communities.
They don't use that anymore?
I just wish they could do something about that intersection.
It's just such an odd intersection.
But it's pretty much residential to the west. But when you move to the east, you do have residential, some dental offices in there. And then finally terminating at Sheldon with the credit union. And I think there's a Montessori school on the, on the Canton side as well. So several different things going on there. And I think there are apartment buildings there as well on the Canton side.
And the house on the northeast corner of Sheldon and Joy, that one I was, it looks like it's a business. There's no sign.
Yeah, so there's a number of options.
And of course, the house across from Piner Middle School.
Porch that won't quit.
Pardon?
The, the house with the porch that won't
Right.
Ever get finished.
Yeah, if the Planning Commission would like to continue with this, then the next step would be to put this in ordinance format and to, you know, prepare the actual overlay on, on the map, zoning map itself.
I recommend you, like that one sentence there where it says, "Non-residential uses are restricted to only those uses that are compatible with residential uses." You need to be more specific on that. And listing the 10 items, the, the implication is that those are the only acceptable items. Somehow you need to say, there, there can be other areas, but this is a, a typical thing. But who's to decide what's compatible with residential issues? You know, you, you just need to be more specific.
I'm not sure about number nine, Laura, accessory garages and carports for automotive storage. That, that seems like an odd use for what we're talking about.
This would be for, let's say that there was a bed and breakfast and they wanted to have, you know, an additional covered parking for three guests. And they had a larger, you know, the lot would have to be one that could be, be designed in such a way. You know, they'd have to have the room to do it. But maybe they would want to have covered parking for guests or?
So accessory garages, it's accessory to a use that's already there. So it could be, I don't know, going back to a dental, you know, I'm trying to think of some use that sort of a semi-residential, people are staying there overnight. It's some kind of an extended stay operation perhaps.
Yes, I certainly didn't intend for this to be auto storage for someone to repair cars on, right? Or sell. So this would be a household or perhaps two households if it was permitted in the district with residential on the second story. And then on the first floor, maybe it would be a small office. Or an art gallery. It could really be any of these other uses, excluding the bed and breakfast. Yes, you're right, this is not currently defined in our ordinance.
Well, right now, there's a lot of live-work units during the COVID situation. And I think what we would want to look at is, as we discussed this in the past, you know, delivery vehicles, you know, what, what kind of traffic does that generate?
Yes, with the, with the live-work unit, it is anticipated that you would have someone from the public, you know, coming, coming to this, to this location to do business. Or you may have another employee as opposed to someone, someone who lives in?
Working remotely, as many people are doing right now.
Yes, and not having the general public come to their house and not having any other employees, just themselves.
I'm not sure if we would want projecting signs as opposed to wall signs. Because once you have a projecting sign, that really makes it look like a more of a commercial area than sort of mixed use. And maybe there could be sign limitations on it or make it more residential, like in character. Well, other thoughts or any other ideas here? Are we generally in agreement? This is something that we should move forward with?
I, I think there's definitely some good examples that people pointed out that would be appropriate.
So Laura, you want a motion from us or?
I think we could just table the discussion for, for next month to incorporate the changes that we discussed tonight and put it into ordinance format.
I didn't, I didn't understand, so no motion for tonight? I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you, if you wanted to just table, I think, this discussion for next month and then to receive, you know, the ordinance, the language in ordinance format.
Perhaps we can just table until you draft up something. I don't want to put you under a time box, you know.
Well, that is a good point. I think that by virtue of these being special land uses, that the Planning Commission does have the latitude to, you know, make discretionary conditions on hours of operation, you know, the size of the, the parking lot, the screening, that type of thing. I think the, the square footage in number eight as well, if it was a personal service business, less than 5,000 square feet of gross floor area.
Oh, one consideration is you, you don't want people parking on streets. It's a residential neighborhood. So they have to provide their own parking on-site.
They do.
Well, you would identify those kind of standards in, once you place it in ordinance form, wouldn't you?
Yeah, so any of these uses, aside from the live-work unit, we have, you know, parking standards for. So those would be triggered as part of this and they would need to meet those minimums or receive a variance, for instance, if they couldn't. Or it would limit the scope of their, you know, operations. Correct.
Well, is there a motion to have Laura look at, look at this and return her draft ordinance proposal to us?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think that two people here are interested in this subject, right? Could we find out if they had anything they wanted to add or comment?
Do, do you want to come up to the podium because it's being recorded and?
On Lilly Road there, right by Plymouth. You know, watching, you know, guys go through the meeting here, I can see that number one, that you know the neighborhood and you know the township, which you should. But I, and I like the fact that you started out at entry level as a first step to introducing mixed usage. I think when I looked at that, 5,000 square feet definitely makes it a small environment. And then the list that you had there, I, I think that those were very good. And I'm obviously interested in number seven, so. But I, I think that's a good, a good beginning. And then if you guys wanted to list the zones like you were doing, I think that's a good entry. It's an entry level, I think, is the way it's been presented. So I like the fact that we fit that initial thing, having a very small group. So I think, I think it's a good step. And then from a business standpoint, I can say from many colleagues that I've worked or talked to and business owners I work, what there is a move to get away from the, whether it's right or wrong, the high-rise, big office building mentality. And people aren't going back to more community, so is the work. Where people aren't driving, they're working, working remotely. So that's kind of been a, I think that's a thing of the future here where people are going to start looking at that. And I think that another good thing, at least for us, you know, I'm a meticulous individual. When we bought this house, we're already planning landscape, we're going to make it look good. Now, I wish the neighbors would do that. But I think you'll find businesses that, around Plymouth, that they do a good job and they, they make the city look good. And, you know, downtown Plymouth is a good example. And some of the other small communities in Northville that have adapted a little bit to this situation. We found more property when we were looking in the Northville area, but there wasn't anything available that fit our needs. So, yeah, we ended up buying the property here and we're hoping this moves forward at least as conservatively and as quickly as we possibly can do. No, we are, with, with the COVID thing, we, we have ended our office lease. We are going to work remotely, number one, because we need to. But hopefully that this is a little blessing for us, the timing. And we're hoping by, you know, January, we, if everybody's able to come back and work in an office environment, we've got the place all cleaned up. So what we're doing now is doing painting, carpet. We're not doing any major adjustments to the facility other than cleaning it up and modernizing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Well, Laura, some of the comments, as I, you know, reflect back on this, it's like, it's always been a standard for us to provide various types of housing for the residents here, different price points, different layouts. So we're really doing the same thing for businesses. You know, as he said, not everyone wants to be in a high-rise. They're better served by having, you know, an environment that we're discussing here. So I think that's another plus of providing diversity of, you know, business sites.
True, and the existing land use from the master plan showed that the township has a very small pool of office and commercial land. So this would be, you know, one option to allow a slight increase in that, expand those options.
Another location I can think of is on, let's see, so Main Street, well, I guess it's Morton Taylor, south of Ann Arbor Road. There's that dentist office, Berman's. And then, south of there, then there's another office building. And then there's a home that I think that that office building wanted to use for parking, perhaps?
That's still Main Street, it's not Morton Taylor.
Right, Main Street.
And there's a lawyer's office across the street, too, on the west side of that street.
And I think, I just drove by there today, and there's that dental building, it's a couple stories. And I think the house next to it is empty.
Right, it's been like that for...
For years.
Years.
And that is another area that could be revitalized, and this might be the answer.
Right.
Okay, well, are we ready for a motion to direct Laura to continue fine-tuning and putting this into ordinance language?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue discussion of this mixed-use district and encourage the planner to develop zoning ordinance language for an addition to the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to direct the planner to continue her work on the further developing mixed-use districts. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, Laura. Next is discussion on the residential building standards. And Laura has provided us with documentation on that, so if you would talk about that. Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you. And so, the tax amendment that we just discussed for mixed-use districts is extremely small in scale compared to this discussion with residential design standards. Or at least it has, this has the potential of being, you know, quite a long-term process if the commission were interested, which maybe could be a potential project for 2021. But I think the documents that I attached as examples of what other communities have done to regulate architecture and to take more of a form-based approach, to really make sure that infill development is in scale and in harmony. It, you know, is quite a long and detailed process, but it definitely has its benefits. This was sort of raised after one of the recent cluster housing projects that was approved by the Planning Commission, was sold to a different developer. And the new developer has different, different model homes. They have different floor plans, they have different elevations. And those floor plans still fit within the, you know, building envelope that met all the setbacks that were approved by the commission. And the amount of materials, the percentages still met our standards, which I also enclosed our architectural standards, which starts on page 233. But even so, meeting those standards, it results in a different built, you know, form. And that can be further regulated by adopting something like an actual architectural code. So I'm happy to discuss these with you. I don't, I don't believe that this has been discussed, at least in the past couple of years. So interested to hear the commission's take on it.
So Laura, is this a result of the discussion you and I had about Andover Forest?
Yes, we're seeing more communities look at more detailed standards, like what was enclosed, as examples. And, you know, in looking at the township's architectural standards, we do have some, which is very important.
I think it would warrant a discussion, but I apologize. I just didn't really have time to digest it.
It's a lot of material.
There's a lot of material here.
Well, I think it's something that the commission really needs to read through, reflect on it. And then we'll have further discussion. I mean, I read through most of it, not all of it, but there's a lot of thought process, I think, that one has to go through. Because this can have wide range of implications. It's sort of almost more complicated than when we did some standards along the Arc District.
Right.
Because now we're getting into, you know, people's individual homes. They want to have a certain look, and, but we want to make sure that we protect the integrity of the neighborhood and the community in large.
Right. Recently, I was driving through Green Meadows, and that neighborhood has really changed with houses being torn down and then just much larger homes compared to the scale of the other homes in the neighborhood. It's really changing the look of Green Meadows. So I encourage everybody to drive around there while they're thinking about these new standards.
Big foot's going into that neighborhood, yeah.
So unless someone has something they want to talk about right now about this, is everyone comfortable just taking some time off in the next month or two, and we'll put it back on the agenda?
That sounds good. This is really interesting though, Laura, thank you.
Okay. And we don't need a motion or anything on this, we'll just... Okay, and next is the meeting schedule for next calendar year. Does anyone have any, I looked at it, I'm glad we're back to the third Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, I didn't see any, I checked with any holidays, too. I didn't see any conflicts.
Right.
So I move that we adopt the 2021 meeting schedule.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Pratt to adapt the 2021 meeting schedule as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the master plan update review of the survey. Laura, that's yours?
Thank you. So as we're going through the master plan update, we are conducting a community-wide survey. And the hard copy of the survey is in front of you this evening. And then a link was sent to your emails this afternoon with the draft survey. It asks some general questions at first, and then it goes into transportation-specific questions, parks and natural features, housing and neighborhoods. There's a section on future land use, where there's some specific questions related to the school craft corridor. And what I feel is a burning question is, should commercial be considered west of Beck Road in the township? That is also in there, as well as, you know, multiple family-assisted living facilities, that type of thing, office. One other question that is not in the survey, but I was considering adding, is the Plymouth Road corridor. It's a little bit of a, it's a commercial corridor in the township that I don't think has received a lot of attention just over the years. And there's kind of a mix of industrial, and then the courthouse redevelopment kind of poses a new use, and the condos to the north, Heinz Park, the connection to the city, landscaping along the corridor. It's also the entry into Livonia. So there's kind of a lot of different, you know, things at play with it. And it might be interesting to see what the community's vision for that corridor is. So that's one opportunity. But I'm happy to take your feedback if you think that there needs to be something added or changed. I'm happy, happy to include that.
I took, I took the survey earlier today, so it's good. A lot of good work that was put into it. The feedback I would have is that sometimes if you have questions that are check-all that apply, people are just going to check them all, you know. What do you like about living here? Yeah, I like this, I like that, I like that. So you might think about that a little bit.
Yeah, like maybe top three or top five reasons or something.
Some way to get me, like the first question, what do I like living, what do I, why do I like living here? Well, I like living here for all those reasons.
Or even put them in numerical order, something like that.
Yeah, something that just says, okay, this is, this is on the forefront of people's minds. I mean, I, you know, speak for myself, I like the small town. I like, it's like a small town in a suburb. It's a suburb that's a small town, right? And if that were, if I had to choose between them, I think I, you might get a little bit better qualitative answer. How do you plan to distribute it?
Thank you for the recommendation on the top three choices. I will, I will change that, and that'll require people to really prioritize what's most important. In terms of publicizing, we've provided the administration with a communications plan. It has sample language for the e-news. There will be a special edition of the e-news that will be sent out, social media posting language. And it will be displayed on the township website, on the front page. We will also be sending language and email to all the boards and commissions. So you'll be the recipient of...
So if it's an opt-in survey, and some of you are smarter than me on this topic, it's not going to be scientific then, at that point, right? Whatever volunteers, or is the sample size big enough that you could, that it's scientific? I don't know. You know about research, right?
Well, you know, it would be helpful if you knew how many people, but you're probably going to have multiple counts of people. So for example, you know, Bill is on this commission, he's on the ZBA, I'm on the historical. So we should really only count as one response. So that, that's one issue that I have with it. But you're really looking for comments rather than scientific approach?
So this isn't going to be a community-wide survey in the sense that it will be mailed to everyone's, you know, home, every household in the township. But it will be available to residents and business owners. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be someone who lives in the community, but it could be someone who owns a business in the community, or owns a property, or comes to the community, in a neighboring community.
So you'll be actually doing a, excuse me, you'll be actually mailing a hard copy of the survey?
We will not be.
You'll just show them the link on where to go, or?
Yeah, so it will be primarily virtual for individuals to take. We're going to be sending out emails to all the HOAs as well, and some of the other groups, like the Plymouth Chamber. And then, you know, as of today, township offices are open to the public by appointment. But we will have hard copies here, and we can certainly send any or work with anyone in the community that wants to pick up a hard copy and fill it out.
So, yeah, so I think what that underscores is that this, this is a means to get input, but it's not really, it's not a survey in the sense that we're not going to come back later and say 53% of the people want us to sell the golf course because they said so in the survey. Because several years ago, we had something really crazy happen like that, and the numbers were not understood, and it was used like, you know... Because that's not really what you're trying to accomplish here. You're not trying to, trying to take a vote on things, right? You're trying to get input as to how people think.
Yeah, the intent of the survey is to reach out to the public and, you know, allow them an opportunity to voice their ideas and their concerns on issues related to the future growth and direction of the township. So, you know, we want to be able to use this as kind of like a pulse on the community and make sure that, you know, our township priorities and decisions are falling in line, falling in step with these things. It won't be a... We're not, we're not looking for, you know, a statistically valid...
Yeah, that was my question. What's the timing, when is it planned? What's the target for releasing it?
Tomorrow is going to go live, and then...
Oh, it's going live tomorrow?
Mm-hmm, the 19th.
Doesn't give us much time to comment on it.
And then it'll be closing on the 18th of December.
So in a way, it's kind of like back 20-some years ago. I think there was an Ann Arbor Road corridor, maybe a planning charrette that went on?
A charrette in '92.
Okay, so quite some time ago, but to get public input on what they wanted Ann Arbor Road to look like.
My suggestion is to, whenever you try and use the results, for whatever reason, you should clearly make it plain how many were sent out and how many responded to various things. Not who responded, but you're going to find that the vast majority don't even respond. And so you have a lot of people who have one issue or one thing, and they're going to make it sound like it's, it's all important. And maybe it is to them. But if, you know, 10 people responded that this issue was important, and 28,000 were sent out, that's not, you know, a significant issue.
Certainly, and I, you know, we know the population of the township, so depending on how many, you know, responses we get back, that can be a good gauge.
And if the response is too low, it's not particularly meaningful. It's just people that have specific agendas. And it's not to be construed that it's township-wide feeling.
Correct, so as part of the master plan process, you, community input, public input is one component that's required by the state. And especially right now, due to COVID, meeting in person and having, you know, an open house, for instance, here at the Township Hall, just isn't really possible. So this community-wide survey is kind of really our, you know, best bet to reaching the widest audience.
But even open houses, you know, the same people will respond to a questionnaire as will come to an open house, and the same people will totally ignore it as being not essential to them. So, you know, always put it in perspective of the level of response.
Correct, so when we get those survey results back and they're shared with the commission and the board of trustees... and they're shared with the commission and the board of trustees, you'll see, it won't just say, uh, 40% think that we should have multifamily on School Craft Road, it will say 1,000 respondents or 2,000 respondents think that there should be multifamily on School Craft Road. So you'll be able to kind of judge the proportionality. If it said 10 respondents think there should be multifamily on School Craft Road, you'll be able to kind of put that in perspective.
Yeah, it, it would have been helpful had we gotten this survey even a few days earlier because there's really no way to comment if it's going live tomorrow. So it's, it's really a done deal at this point. I think one question would have been here is why do you like to live here in the Plymouth Township would be because work is nearby. That would give us some sense of how important is business development in the township.
Yeah, we, we could add that into number one.
Oh, well, I might have some other too, but there's, there's not enough time, so... I think in the future, if we could get just a few days of time to look at it and reflect on it instead of, uh, less than 24 hours.
Well, it, it can go out later tomorrow, it doesn't need to go out right away if you'd like to take, you know, the morning and send me any comments by one or two.
I wouldn't want to hold it up, obviously it's, decisions have been made on this, so that, that's fine.
Well, I, for one, I really like the maps on here and the regions, but I would be interested if, as long as we're doing this, to see what people would say about the region that you brought up earlier today out on, um...
Lily Road?
Up by the Courthouse Grill.
Oh, on Plymouth Road?
Right, if that were possible to put in there and also if there were any type of question that could be related to the issue that we just spoke about with the mixed use, um, in neighborhoods. Um, it might be a good idea to take this opportunity to get a pulse from the residents to see what they would think about possibly having an art gallery in their neighborhood or a business like Who Is Here Tonight? So if something like that could put, would fit in here, I think it'd be a great opportunity just to get some information.
You know, I took it as well as that. There was a point where I think it said, uh, described in one word.
Mhm, yeah.
To me, I fought with it and I struggled with it for a bit because I would have rather said, come up with, uh, you know, a few things you like because there's always a few things out there and you say just one, uh, which characterizes just one.
Yeah, I've done other surveys where you have to write a sentence or give three words.
Mhm.
Some, five words, because as long as we're getting the data, that's, get as much information, I guess, that we can.
You're going to get a lot of funny answers from people who ride bicycles to get around the township.
I know.
In better shape than me, Laura?
I can change number three to say in three words.
That'd be good. Because I've done a lot of surveys in my life and, um, I like this one.
Thank you. We do have a, um, in question number two, where does Plymouth Township have opportunities to improve? Uh, one of the, one of the answers is business development. So I'm hoping Chairman Sobolski that that kind of goes to, if, you know, and people think we need to be focusing more on the economic development.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it's, it'll be good input. It's just got to be framed that way, it's, it's, it's input.
Well, it helps people focus, you know, if they just show up at a public hearing here, you know, there's no, uh, guidance to direct their thoughts and...
Yeah.
And at the end, we do have, um, an open-ended question if anyone feels like they have additional, you know, input that they'd like to provide that wasn't, you know, addressed earlier in the survey. Yes. It is easier to take on, you know, on, on the web, um, in Survey Monkey.
Well, one of the things that I know this will be controversial is about walking the dog on a leash in the Township Park. There is, is the question, should there be a dog park? But there's no way to pull that out of here. As opposed, you know, they'll say, oh yeah, well, if, if, you know, does that mean if, if you get a high response to that, does that mean should a dog park be created?
So I, I asked that question at the Board of Trustees meeting, uh, last week because, uh, uh, you know, a lot of the residents have asked and, uh, Heisey said, you know, we would, uh, when, when we do a goal-setting, the Board of Trustees in January, that will address that issue because I think there's, there's, there's dogs in the park. And, um, it continues to, you know, to come up as an issue. People are asking whether, and I don't know how you guys feel about that. I don't know if there's ever been any discussion.
No, we haven't, we've never really gotten into that, but I know I walk at Township Park periodically.
Yeah.
And I've, I've seen dogs there primarily by the people that live near there because they come through that entrance from the top of the hill.
Yeah, I mean personally, my personal opinion is I don't have a problem with it if they clean off, as they clean off and keep them on a leash.
So Laura, if we thought of anything else, if we let you know by like 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, would that be okay?
You can really let me know by, um, by, by noon or even 2:00. I mean, it, it's just going to go out in a, in a mailing that's already, you know, set up, it's already teed up, so, um, it's really just adding, adding the link and then pushing send.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to make these other changes that we discussed.
You know, getting back to item three, I think was the question. And I like the idea of three divided words, which you can also say in 10 words or less. Why do you, what, why do you characterize?
I like that, that gives the person a opportunity to do a sentence and try to remain, you know, you know, distinct on what their thinking is.
I could do it in one word.
Go ahead, I challenge you.
Stability.
Yeah, I used almost the same word.
Just stability. Had a great place, we don't need to screw it up.
So this starts out tomorrow and then ends in mid-December, is that what you said?
Yes, correct.
So that, so that at, at that juncture then, we would get the results in, at the January meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
The goal is to present these survey results, um, at the January 12th Board of Trustees meeting in align with the goal-setting.
Sounded like to me where, where this was headed anyway.
What tool was this, was it Survey Monkey that you used?
Yep.
So you don't have to do a lot of manual compilation of the results, right? It's just going to...
Correct. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty great, it generates the Excel documents and everything for you. Uh, no.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, so we can get back to you tomorrow?
Yes, of course.
By the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, and next, uh, Planning Commissioner comments?
I have two.
Okay.
Uh, one is that gentleman that was here tonight, they got, uh, a variance for that property that he's purchased at the zoning Board of Appeals meeting last week. So he, he, uh, he needed a variance for his redesign for a front yard setback and he got that variance last week. Just to let you guys know that that's, he's headed in that direction. Secondly, uh, for, for you Laura, um, we had a discussion, uh, last meeting concerning the rear yard setback and we suggested that, that we wanted you to develop or, yes, give, give us new language in those sections for that. And I, have you, have you, are you working on that, or?
Yes, we are, we just didn't have enough time to finalize it and get it on this month's agenda.
Well, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we were moving forward with it, that's all.
Correct, it is not off the radar.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to adjourn the meeting at 8:22. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.